Okay, thank you, Mike. All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, if you could help me with the roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderperson Saloga.
Here.
Barron's excused. Valdi.
Valdi is here.
Dean.
Here.
Grimmer.
Here.
Kassen.
Present.
Iker.
Here.
Mayor Atwell.
Present.
And Administrator Hafner.
Here.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, citizens' comments. Any citizen's comments for items on our agenda? Come up, Susie.
Susie Thompson, 700 Milwaukee Street. When you get to item 9B under new business, the laptop at the top of the page refers to 15-inch. It then goes into detail saying it is 15 and a half inch. I just want to mention, although it may show it's available at this moment on Amazon or on Dell, you need to know Dell is really running short, and so I suggest that the council approves, if not that exact model of Dell, that you be willing to let whoever's ordering it order what is available in that size. I waited two months for Dell to deliver. They kept pushing back the date a week, a week, and literally after seven weeks, I gave up and I ordered an HP computer. So you need to be aware, both 2019 and 2020 models are noted as being available online. So in that size, you need to be aware, they're just running out because everybody's buying them for schools. The second thing I wanted to note, the Della Field Car Show was a fabulous success. We had 10 businesses that were open. We gave information to people about the businesses. Harriet Daybreak literally almost ran out of meat for his barbecue. He had three pieces of meat left. He ran out of hot dogs, brats, and hamburgers, and only had a few steaks left. So it was fabulous. Mazatlan was just swamped, so was Blue Collar Coffee. Revere's just told me they always have a good day on Sundays, but they had one and a half to two times their good amount, so they were also up. Waterford Wine said also that they had very good response. The public support for it was phenomenal. People that came were calling friends and other people to attend as well as to be in the car show, but the Lions and the citizens of Della Field really came out in droves to help. I'm sure we had at least 20 volunteers to run the show that day, but it gave an excellent impression of Della Field, the citizens even going by and people who were here. I talked to young people who came, kind of spur of the moment, and they were just so impressed. They were impressed that we talked to our police, that we would call the police to help us with something, and they said normally they don't even talk to the police and they try and lay low, and how people got along so well with each other, and that we warmly greeted the police and other people, that everybody was very respectful. And literally two young men told me, when they get done with school, they want to move here. So I thought that was the best recommendation for Della Field. But it was a good time, and we had, I don't know the exact count, but I think we had twice as many cars as we did last year. And so having it spread out throughout the town was nice. And Tom and Chief were out to tell about the tax referendum, and that was also well-received. I talked to a lot of citizens who said they didn't understand it, looking at the words if you preview the online, and so giving that information and being there to explain was also helpful. Thanks. Thanks for your work on it, Susie.
Sandra, come on up.
Sorry, I think I found some, but, and I found out that we don't have paper books at my house. I was able to scrounge up as many as I could, but.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sandra.
Thanks, hi.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Sandra Felker. I live at 2420 Nagulika Road. I saw recently that the city has published and put out an information packet on the referendum that's coming up. I thought that it really contained a lot of information about where the city needs to.
Close your to the microphone.
Oh, sorry, where we're going to actually be losing services should the referendum not pass, but I didn't think that it really offered a good picture of where some of our costs are coming from. I've heard a number of times from the employees here or from the council that our employee costs are where the significant share of the budget money comes from within the city. So I looked through the budgets. It's really difficult to be able to see where the budget money is going because everything gets distributed into different buckets, so you can't really see a big, clear picture of it. So what I did was I requested a summary of the salaries and benefits of all of our city employees so that I could kind of do some analysis on that and try to figure out, you know, where are we spending our money as a city? So this information was provided by Mary Green on 9/11, and I have been looking over it. I provided some calculations for everybody. I also provided some information where I had to make some assumptions so that you knew what numbers I was working with. The Public Works team, they have full-time employees, but they also have some part-time work that they utilize. So I went through and kind of did an estimation on how many employees that kind of equated up to. Same thing with the library and then also with the court because our judge is not a full-time judge here. So another thing to note is that our city administrator is a single resource. His job responsibilities span two departments, and as such, in the city documentation I received, his line item was separated out. There was not a combined into one account or another. So our total salary spend for 2020, based on the salaries or the employees who are on payroll here, was $4,511,000, or $4,511,686,000. You can see how that's distributed across the different teams. The police has the lion's share of that at 2.3 million. Public Works is just under a million at 912,000. The library, our office, and I included the council, we have about $32,000 that is spent by the common council salaries plus the committees, so that's included there. Then we've got the city administrator at 174,487. This is inclusive. This is not salaries. This is salaries and benefits, so just be clear on that. Then we also have court and tourism that's just under $90,000. So as a percentage, if we look at that across the board, we have 4% of our salaries, our 4% of our employee costs, is going to one role. One role has 4% of our employee costs. If we look at the next page where we've got kind of some of that information, you can see that if we did an average cost by employee per department, you can see kind of where we're landing. The city administrator's role is 174,000. Where the police, their combined salary benefits is landing about 129,000. Public Works team, 76,000. Our office administration staff, 74,000. Library, 59,000, and so on down the line. So you can kind of really see that these numbers start to tell a story. You can also see average employee cost comparison that I have on that next page. So really what I wanted to kind of talk about was our analysis of what this really means. I didn't request, I'm not sure I would have received it if I did, performance metric information. That's not something that was taken into consideration with this. Also, I think you need to know, I really like Tom. I think that he does a good job. I'm just concerned that we are in a small city and a small community, spending a lion's share of our money that we have taking in in tax dollars on one resource. And if we think about this, if we were to replace that resource with a less expensive resource, we would not have to eliminate any services to our citizens. So I think that it's important for this common council to realize that you represent the citizens of this city, and you need to help us define a path for reducing expenses that are the least impactful to our city constituents as possible. And based on the fact that we've had budget problems for the last few years, this isn't going to go away. If this referendum passes, we are going to land right back here in five more years. We have to make some drastic changes now, and we have to think about what that means. Now, the biggest thing that I am recommending, as you can read through this document, is that I think we need to resegregate the responsibilities of the director of Public Works and the city administrator. We have some very senior resources within our Public Works team who are also doers. They go out and they plow the snow off the sidewalk. They share in those responsibilities. They manage those teams day-to-day, but they're also people who are doing things on the ground to help our Public Works teams. So I think that that's really important to be thinking about. We also need to think about the fact that there is a benefit for us to be transitioning resources out. Tom was hired here almost 18 years ago. We are paying for a very senior resource when we don't need to be. You know, what we really should be doing as an organization is putting together a staffing strategy. We should be thinking about what it is that we need to do for our people and what types of resources and skill sets do they need. We offered 18 years ago an opportunity for growth, and we can do that again. We can actually find somebody who has a lot of ambition, a junior resource, pay them closer to what the average salary for a city administrator is being paid, which is $72,000. $72,000, and we pay the salary that we are paying for our city administrator. Granted, it is a shared role, and there is some synergies that you can get from that, but we are paying $134,000 for a role that is, on average, $72,000. So that's nearly double that price. So I think that there is some adjustments that we can be made without losing city services there. Another opportunity that I think that we have is that we need to put, as I said, that strategy and model in place. We need to look at every role within our organization and try to figure out what are the roles. I think that turnover has a bad connotation, and we think that that's bad. If people leave, we think that's bad, but sometimes it's part of the plan. Sometimes it's part of the strategy is to give people a really good opportunity and benefit from their resources during the time that they're in a pay scale that we can afford, and then you let them move on to other opportunities, and it's a growth pattern. And that's what we really should be aiming for within a city the size of Della Field. Other things that I was looking at is I do believe that the utility clerk is going to be retiring at the end of this year. I think we should not replace that role. I think that's something that probably many of you are thinking about. We should not replace that role, and instead what we should do is try to absorb that into the other three clerks. I think this is the first time in a long time that we've had three full-time clerks employed within the city, so I think we probably have the capability and the opportunity to do that at this time. Another area of concern, as I was going through these numbers, is the cost for our police force. And I don't know enough, I'll be very honest with that, I don't know enough about comparative police forces in a community our size to know whether we're adequately staffed, whether we're overstaffed, whether we're overpaying for resources or not. I think that that's something we really need to take a look at over the next year. I don't feel comfortable right now losing a police officer, but I know that's my personal opinion. I'm not sure how everybody else feels within the community, but I do think that we need to do some really heavy digging and try to figure out, you know, where are we at in comparison, and where do we need to be, and really have an objective view on that. So that's the information I've provided for you. Hopefully, it was useful. If you have any follow-up questions, I think all of you know how and where to reach me, and I'd be happy to share anything further.
Thank you. Thank you for the thoughtful work.
Great, thank you. Okay, seeing no other citizens' comments, citizens' comments are now closed. We'll move on to number five, consent agenda. Let's see, the minutes.
Move to improve the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, committee reports. A, licenses. Any licenses? Nope, okay. 6B, planning commission. Mr. Iker.
Yeah, we did have a planning commission meeting last week. It was relatively short. Some signs, some businesses opening up, moving. And so just look at the minutes in general, though, I'll tell you, the trend has been a decent amount of activity as far as businesses staying, growing, moving locations, and we'll all of seeing new signs and new business plans of operations going up. So just look in the minutes over the last couple of months, and you'll see who's been joining us. The other thing that we've been doing, our new city planner, has been kind of methodically going through some things procedurally that we can look at in our code to provide more clarity and consistency with, and just plain and simple language in our code for people who are looking to do a building addition, a new building, a new project, or, you know, or even just something to do with their lot, to put it in simpler language that can kind of shorten the process. And so those are things that'll end up coming our way when we go to actually change code. So you'll see them coming sometime in the next couple of months. Aside from that, meeting at the end of the month.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, C, Lake Welfare Committee.
No minutes, and the meeting is coming up next, Wednesday the 14th.
Wednesday the 14th, excellent, thank you. Okay, we'll go to D, Park and Rec. Mr. Grimmer.
Meeting on the 28th. I was unable to attend. I will refer you to the minutes.
Thank you very much. 6E, Public Works Committee. Mr. Barron's not here. I believe he told me when he would be absent, he didn't have any meetings since the last meeting, and look forward to the next one for both committees he was on. Okay, F, Delahart. Mr. Iker again.
We haven't had a meeting since our last.
Okay, Police Commission. Mr. Saloga.
Yeah, no meeting, no report since the last.
Great, moving right along. H, Library Board.
Same.
Valdi.
Echo Chamber, no meeting, but we will be meeting on October 13th, 6:30 via Zoom.
Great, it's looking good for making the Packer game. Okay, 6I, Zoning Board of Appeals.
No meeting, no minutes.
There we go. J, Promotion and Tourism Commission. Mr. Barron, there was no meeting. Lake Country Fire Commission, there was no meeting. 6L, Lake Country Fire Board, Mr. Grimmer.
No meeting, no report. Next meeting, October 8th at Station 1.
Thank you very much. 6M, Tree Board.
No meeting, no report.
Okay, 6N, Deer Committee. No meeting or report since last meeting. Okay, 7, Unfinished Business. We have none. Mayor's Report. Susie gave the brief overview I was going to give for the Della Field Car Show, and I'd like to thank Susie for all her hard work in doing that. There were a lot of winners on Sunday, a lot of winners. Okay, 9, New Business. Discussion of Council Meeting Procedures and Common Council Development. That's it.
Okay.
Phil.
Thank you very much.
Floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I don't want to take a whole lot of time tonight. Really, what I wanted to do was just say that from my first few months and getting some experience and some exposure with the common council here, how we function, I was hoping to just kind of send out a document the other day. I'm not sure that everybody received it. That's the first thing I'd like to do, is just make sure everybody did get a copy of it, if you ever take a chance to take a look at it. There's some things in there that, you know, maybe I have to still discern and figure out, be educated on, but I think at the same time, there's some areas that we can look at as a common council and to discuss some things. So I kind of see it, well, not kind of, I do see it as an ongoing discussion. So I'm not going to take much more time now, but I just want to make sure everybody's had a chance to see it, and, you know, we can take it up another time, or people can ask me individual questions if I was going to present something in particular. I will just say, the questions that I had here, most particularly, I can just address one right now, is item number two is just council development. That's kind of where the words came from. I've been involved in several institutions and usually have some kind of ongoing training or retreats, or whatever you'd like to call them, just to try and figure out what the best practices would be. That's what item number two is referring to. The other ones are just kind of looking at how we actually operate, and I think most notably is number four. If I could just direct your attention to that one, just a moment. I think the wording, and I talked a little bit about this with Tom, the wording on almost every single item on our agenda says, "Discussion and Possible Action on." I would just like to bring forward that, and I think we've had a little bit of miscommunication here, in fact, on the common council, and I know I've had it on the Lake Welfare Committee, where an item was being first addressed, first made public, actually, and because it said, "Possible action on," I actually had citizens, almost a half dozen citizens that were there in citizens' comments, thinking that we were not transparent. It's, "Discussion and action on implies we're ready to go." I don't think the public knows we can't talk about this elsewhere. So that's just illegal, and I think to try and convey that to the public, we should use wording differently, excuse me, different wording. And if you take a look at what some other places have included, Fox Point, I would just say, they just say, "The Village Board will discuss." Other places say, "Consider," and Brookfield actually has no verb whatsoever. They just have a topic. So there's nothing implied by the action. I don't know what the best way legally to make sure that we can address the issues we need, all right? I don't know what the wording or the verbiage is, and with Steve's help, maybe we can be working through that. But those are my two biggest items. So if you've got more questions, I'd be glad to answer them individually. I don't believe there's any reason to go through them now unless somebody's really got something pressing, but.
No, yeah, I really appreciate the concern, and then I think especially so that folks understand that we can't discuss things, you know, except here, and so it has to be brought forth formally and then just make it more clear, like, initial discussion on, and then, you know, deliberation about, or something along those lines. And I'm sure there's legalese that you all would know.
You actually kind of repeat one of my important points, is that we've got to be able to discuss it here.
Right.
This is the only place we can discuss it, so as a result.
Like this is it, yeah.
And I think because of the referendum and the financial situation, we're going to have to think creatively, and it's going to take us focusing on topics that are the political in nature and not personal. And I haven't seen anything egregious so far, no, I haven't, but I've heard that has happened, and I just would hate to go there. So that is why also, and the very last item suggested that we could look at some other cities that just offer an opportunity for aldermen to comment at the end of the meeting. Fox Point, for example, simply says, you know, the, every single board member, yes, Village Board member is actually given an opportunity to make announcement. Can be no discussion, obviously, because it's not an agenda item, but just to make comments, because, to tell you the truth, I asked for Tom, excuse me, I asked Tom for this time because I wasn't even sure where I could insert this because it's not an agenda item. So maybe a part of that is just my learning, and forgive me if I make those faux pas, but I think we can operate a little more efficiently as far as wording on the agendas and how we discuss things.
So I'll just throw in on your item about the agenda, you know, for discussion and possible action. So in my 15 years of being on the Lake Welfare Committee and stuff, that's what I've always seen, and the way that, the reason it works that way is it's, that's like the default, right? Discussion and possible action, because you can bring something up to discuss, and if the committee or the council decides, hey, we'd like to show that, we'd like to have the city administrator run us a report to gather the following issue to make sure there's concurrence, you might vote, you know, make a question, somebody seconds, and you take the motion. You may just end up discussing and not have to do anything. So I guess the point is, you're not always sure exactly what you're going to do, and that's why the default is, you know, for discussion and possible action. Now, if you, I have seen on many occasions where a particular topic comes up and we say, "Just discuss," that there's an intent to not make any action and just to discuss. So that's also a choice as well. Just understand that if you do want to take action, you can't. You'll have to wait to the next meeting. So that's how, in my brain, how I've seen it implemented and how we've continued to implement it.
I don't object to our current use of discussion and possible action, but I'm all in favor of clarity, and if there's a consensus on the board that rephrasing some of these is beneficial and provides more clarity to the public, I'd get behind it. For now, I don't know if it's semantics or there is, or if there's something there there, but I'd absolutely be willing, and I thank Phil for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
I mean, it has to meet the minimum threshold of.
Yes.
Public notice.
You know, we went through this in the past, and it was probably a decade ago, so it's good to bring it up again and discuss, but in the past, the attorney's been involved, and there's been issues in the past where staff has to make some assumptions on agenda language, and then council or other committee gets frustrated because it wasn't put down for potential action, then it's a delay a month, so that goes into it as well. Phil, I'm just curious, when you look at Fox Point, do you see any significant difference between the Village Board will discuss and may act versus discussion and possible action? And isn't that the same thing?
That one is similar to ours, but they also did have, and I just didn't, I omitted it, my error, Village Board will discuss. That was something I also had seen when I looked through a few of their agenda items, so.
Yeah, and like Ken said, we do that occasionally, but as far as staff, if we're uncertain or if there's any question as to what will happen, we'll just leave it flexible so that the council can determine if they want it to be just discussion or discussion and action.
Okay. I can certainly understand that because you want to have that door open, but at the same time, I know that I've had several people bring that, constituents in my neighborhood bring that forward as a concern, because they spoke at the meeting, so a balance in there, I think, is.
Well, I think too, just to jump in, sometimes like at Lake Welfare or the other committees, that's where a lot of the considerations are initially introduced. So by the time something comes to council, it's more likely there's a possible action because it's been discussed, let's say, at Lake Welfare or at Library Board or Parks and Rec. Am I right? So that by the time it gets here, there could be action, although I've asked for Although I've asked for things and then not necessarily want action or discussion, I just, just discussion, you know? And that can be confusing as well. So yeah, I think it bears examination.
Okay. The only other thing I wanted to mention was on.
No action, though. I'm kidding.
Only other thing I wanted to mention on number two is, um, you know, um, the, the, there are a lot of resources out there for different trainings. We, as an alderperson, you've probably been seeing them now from, um, uh, I'm forgetting the name of the organization. Tom, can you help me out?
The League.
The League.
The League.
The League of Immunities, yeah.
And so, you know, different times, I mean, there's literally hundreds of training courses. Some are in person, some now, a lot of them are online. It is really helpful. I have taken at least a half dozen of those, um, on different topics at different times over the years, and it's very helpful. I mean, I know it's a lot to go through that list and see what they're all about, and they come out every, whatever, 30 days or 45 days. But, you know, um, I find, I find great value in taking those. And it's not like I took them a long time ago. I just took one probably three months ago.
Those, uh, yeah, I would, I would echo that point. I know you and I went to that transportation one about grading roads. That was very enlightening.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm, I'll continue looking at that. I actually have been on the phone with them, in fact, to ask them some questions. So I'll continue to look at what they've got.
Great.
Mr. American, I add something to that.
Sure.
Um, I, in one of my past locations, I was really heavy on orientation of the new board, of the new elected officials that came on. So every year or two years, we, uh, we would put together orientation programs. And in conjunction with the attorney, we'd have ethics training, uh, open meetings law training, all that stuff. It was good orientation. You know, if there were nobody new on the board, we'd do it every two years, that kind of thing. So just throwing that out there. You may see that coming up in the next year or two.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. Thanks for bringing it up, Phil. Okay, uh, seeing no other discussion, we'll move on to B. Request by city clerk and administrator director of Public Works to authorize the city administrator to select and enter into a contract with the company to install permanent partition glass at the administration office from counter and use funds from the Routes to Recovery Grant Program in an amount not to exceed $3,500. Which one of you two own this one?
Steve is going to take the lead on this.
Steve's got it.
Well, um, everyone got the memo in their packets. Do you have any questions to start off?
Where did we get the $3,500?
Uh, I'll defer to Tom on that. Well, but.
There were three quotes?
Yeah, we got a quote and we were waiting on two others. Um, we didn't know the exact, wait, who asked the question? Like, it's hard to tell with the mass.
Matt, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we got one quote for about $2,400, um, and we were waiting on two more quotes. So we picked a number at the, because we didn't know what the other two quotes were going to be. We thought $3,500 was a reasonable amount.
So we did bring this up once before. I don't remember how far along back it was, if it was four years ago or six years ago. And, um, at that particular time, um, the council thought it was more important to keep, I wouldn't say more, that's probably a bad choice of words. The council thought that leaving that open and friendly and personal, uh, to the people that were there at the time was probably a better idea than, than walling it off. But certainly we have a new council now, so, um, obviously we're bringing it up and, and that opinion can change. Um, I just wanted to add a comment on it. I mean, I'm all for putting up a temporary barrier, certainly for COVID reasons. It looks decent compared to the two-by-fours that we have up there now. But, and I, I live in the city of Delphill because I, I want to feel safe, right? And I, I want my community to be safe so that I don't have to be, you know, overly concerned about my safety. And I, I think the city has the resources currently to do that. And, um, I'm just not a wall-off person myself. I don't do that at my own home. And, um, you know, I, I, I like that open feeling myself. And I like being able to feel like non-COVID times, right? That I'm having a personal interaction with someone. But I certainly understand the concerns over safety, but I'd rather try to find another way to make it safer, I guess, is my opinion. And I look forward to everyone else's opinion.
How much money is there kept up there or is there another concern? Uh, when this, one has mentioned that, you know, somebody might jump the counter. Sorry, I guess I need to be educated. What kind of things would somebody jump? I can't imagine somebody going in to steal a city document, so I, I need some.
Cash-wise, um, we, we'll, we'll have up to about $1,000 at any one point in time.
But the police are there at least once a day, every day, to run the money to the bank. So it's not like it's there for any, any period of time. They're, they're there every day to, to make the money run.
Yeah, I'll just say that this, this is coming from the, um, the upfront, um, customer, um, receptionist, uh, people. I know Susan Johnson, she's expressed concern about this for, for a long time now. Uh, it goes all the way back to the design of the city hall and whatnot. Um, do some of that incorporated into the original design of the city hall? And when we went into Plan B, a lot of those things, um, were lost. Uh, it has come up. Michelle Lukey brought it up, uh, a couple of years ago. Uh, and at that time, the council indicated that, um, they felt like a barrier, um, kind of gave the perception of, uh, of a unfriendly and unsafe work environment. And, uh, so we didn't proceed with it at that time. And now it's really coming up again at this point, primarily because we've got the opportunity for it to be funded by grant funding. So just want to run it past the council and see if, uh, if it's something you might want to change your mind on based on the availability of the funding.
I think, yeah, I think we're crazy not to, to be honest with you. It, it's a safety thing, but more, um, we don't know how long we're going to have, uh, barriers or what have you. I mean, the post office had that god-awful-looking plastic stuff hanging down, and now they have these nice, clean, they're in need. You know, you can still interact, you can still see them. It's not like, you know, you're slipping something completely under, but it does give, um, you know, I think, a number of benefits. And if we have, um, some grant money that can help pay for it, um, yeah. I mean, I mean, I like, uh, friendly offices and, you know, a welcome feel when you walk to, you know, walk up to City Hall to make an inquiry, drop off a ballot or pay a bill. Um, it is important to be friendly, but it's also important to be safe.
Now, I would just point out that this really is becoming the norm, not just in, um, you know, certain cities, but, but in your nicer suburbs and whatnot, in your packets, you see what Watertown and McQuanigle look like.
Right, right.
And, um, from my perspective, they're very professional, very pleasant-looking. Uh, they're not the kind of glass that you'd see at the gas station or something like that. So that's just my thoughts on it.
Well, the staff will have to get up, you know, every time somebody comes up to that door instead of me shouting over the counter. So, um, I'm indifferent to it, to be quite honest.
Which, um, sorry, which, which designer are we focused on? Which, which one do we, have you got a final?
I don't think we have a drawing or anything.
Cause there's, the ones where it's open across the top and open across the bottom, but is a barrier. I mean, that's kind of common with what you're seeing in grocery stores and that now where there's customer service. That, I think that gives the open-air still feeling. And I, I like those versus the ones with the, you know, like the stop-and-go or whatever, like a, an open pantry, gas station or something. You'd be having Gary and Hannah off the tollway.
The all-metal.
Talking through a speaker like you're in jail.
Tim, have you seen these pictures?
Yeah, I did, I did. So the ones that are, where there's openings on the bottom and top.
Like Watertown is kind of open at the top.
Yeah, the Watertown one.
The, the McQuanigle one is too, it's just lower and on the top and bottom.
And it is a, so there's a couple of things. One, we've got a locked door there on the side, but there's an open counter that's eight feet high from the, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's a, it's odd that we're locking the door and it's like, if you will, if you really want to get in.
It's a really good point, you can just jump the counter.
And whether it's just for six months or, or the next 18 months, whenever, we'll see when everyone settles down on, on COVID or what the next breed brings, um, I mean, the patrons will feel more comfortable too, having it on the other side, so.
Well, I think two people.
It makes sense, and regardless of the funding source, we should scrutinize it. It's not money that fell from the sky. If someone else has a better use, they should use it. But this seems appropriate to me.
I agree too.
Especially if it's been this, I didn't know the history of the recurring theme with employees saying, you know, that, like, it's been a request and it just hasn't been something that's been enabled until now. So I'm, I'm good. Yeah, that one there looks good, that's your one.
I like the Halloween decorations. I was going right for those.
Was it, oh, different question. Is there, I'm assuming we, this money isn't specifically earmarked for a barrier like this. Is it, but it can be used for a barrier like this, is that?
Correct.
Is there other competing needs in the city where this one rose to the top? Or this is one that came instantly to mind? I mean, is there a list and we picked this one over someone who really wants something?
This is one that came instantly to mind. And the city has, um, a little over $116,000 allocated to it that if we have those many qualified expenses, that's how much we can get. And we do anticipate being able to, uh, reach that mark, um, regardless of whether this expense is included or not.
Well, the police fire station and the fire station both have the glass in front. I don't hear any complaints or concerns there, so it's not unreasonable.
It's a good point.
Great, is there, so do you want to make a motion, one way or the other?
I'll make a motion to, uh, move forward with the, um, proposal. Do you want us to authorize nothing above the $3,500?
That is staff's recommendation, yes.
Okay. As put, I'll, I make a motion to approve the request for, um.
Not to exceed?
Yeah, not to exceed, uh, $3,500 for the, I don't know what you want to call them. Glass or?
Partitions?
Partitions?
Partition of glass.
How inarticulate was that?
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Slogo seconds. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, we are on to C. Request by city administrator director of Public Works to approve the purchase of three laptop computers for $4,409.80 and to pay the remaining $3,306.80 for the service, for the server by November 6th and include these expenses in the city's Route to Recovery reimbursement request. Tom?
Yeah, so, so after kind of debriefing after Safer at Home and, and what we went through with COVID in, um, in March and April and May, um, one of the things that really limited us and, uh, is, is lack of laptop computers for remote access for our employees. And so staff got together and we've identified that, um, with three additional laptop computers, we feel it'll significantly improve our flexibility and responsiveness to, um, to crises like that. Uh, it'll also protect employees and the city with regards to not having employees use personal computers for work stuff when they have to. Uh, you know, there's certainly the potential for, uh, employees to have to stay home if they, um, contract COVID, things like that. Uh, and this would provide an opportunity for them to, um, continue working from home, um, in a way that remains fast and efficient and, um, uh, and allows them to do so without using their own personal computer. This is also eligible for Routes to Recovery funding. We would intend to fund it through that. Uh, Suzie had mentioned, uh, delays with, uh, Dell computers. And our IT consultant has certainly, uh, let us know about that. Uh, but they do believe that they can get these, uh, computers in a short time. Um, and nonetheless, uh, the big thing is we really need to incur the cost before November 6th. Um, so if it becomes a problem, uh, if you approve it and it becomes a problem, we would actually, uh, then pay the, for the computers in advance of receiving them so that they would be, uh, eligible for funding. Uh, similarly, we've identified the new server that we had already purchased this year as an eligible expense for Routes to Recovery. The purchase arrangement we had with that is we paid, um, trying to remember, we paid $4,000 this year. That's already been paid, uh, so we can submit that for Routes to Recovery funding. Uh, and the remaining, uh, a little over $3,300 was to be paid out of next year's budget. Uh, however, if we, um, advance that, uh, cost to, uh, this year, then we can, uh, receive Routes to Recovery funding to cover that cost. And so we would recommend, uh, that, uh, council act in that manner. Any questions on that?
So right now, if you had one positive COVID test in the office, they would be using their own computers from home?
Well, certainly the, uh, the infected person would.
Right.
But don't people who are in proximity have to quarantine then?
They would have to quarantine.
Oh.
The COVID would isolate, the contacts would quarantine.
Right.
So would they, they'd be using their personal computers now?
Now they would, correct.
If that happened. And these are not, these would be staff-dedicated? Or would they be pool computers where everybody grabs one as they're running for cover?
So staff-dedicated with the flexibility to reassign them as needed to other employees.
Okay.
I see they have a docking station, so will that replace the computer they use in their office or is that just?
No, we talked, we talked about that. And, um, by working remotely through, by connecting into your desktop, it actually provides for a faster connection for them, especially with third-party software that's not hosted on their computer, such as our new, um, accounting and financial software.
Okay. You need the docking system for that?
Well, the docking station is really just for cord management, so you don't have to unplug everything every time you take your laptop.
Okay.
Uh, just, your laptop just pops in and out of it. You don't detach any cords.
Gotcha. Great, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of, uh, the three laptop computers for the designated price and to pay, uh, the remaining $3,306 for the server, expensing that to the Routes to Recovery reimbursement request.
Not to exceed that price, Phil?
Not to exceed that price.
I'll second.
Good. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, reports of city officials, 10A.
Actually, we had item D first.
Oh, did I miss it?
Yeah.
Sorry. Vouchers payable report for reporting dates 9/22 to 10/5 in the amount of $145,786.35 for accounts payable and $73,724.81 for the payroll. That's a new format from the clerk. Is there a motion to approve the voucher list?
Steve, do you want to just briefly talk about the change to the format and putting it, relocating it on the agenda?
Certainly. Um, in the past, it was only listed as vouchers payable report under the clerk. You still have taken action on it.
Got it? All right, so in the past, uh, the vouchers report was just listed as vouchers report, a very generic title, under the clerk. Um, but you still took action on it. I'm a big believer, kind of going with, with, Phil was saying earlier, um, that I'm a big believer in proper wording on an agenda. So I expanded out the wording and I moved it to, since it's an actionable item, it should really be under new business, uh, not just a report. So that, that was the purpose of the move and the expansion of the language.
Sounds good. Sounds good, kick me if I get it wrong. Is there a motion for the vouchers list?
There was.
Oh, I'm sorry, there was?
Jackie, and I'll, I'll second that. Did you, you did motion for it?
I, I, yeah, I thought I did, yeah.
You were starting.
I heard mine.
Yeah, I started to.
So Jackie motion to approve and Phil seconded? Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, now we can move on to 10A Administrator.
Yeah, a few things to update the council and the public on. First of all, we do have our referendum public information documents available. We've got copies here tonight, if anybody would like copies. They're also available on the website. There's really three documents that are available. One is a kind of a long-form summary, more detailed summary of the information involved with the referendum. That's five pages long, three pages when it's printed front and back. Then we have a one-page summary of that information, a little bit briefer format. And then lastly, we've got a budget comparison, showing a comparison of the city's 2010 budget versus the 2020 budget. And the amount that the budget has gone up per year. And it kind of, at least in my opinion, demonstrates the city has acted in a very fiscally conservative manner with regards to budget practices over the past decade. So any questions on those documents?
No questions, just, they look really good. They, I especially like the short form, I've already shared it with people on my email list. I think it's just clear and concise, which is what a lot of people want. And if you like the details, there's lots of that too. So thank you, that's a lot of work there.
Well, Melissa Beck of the library was instrumental in helping us kind of lay that out. And her graphics design expertise was put to good use with that document. So thank you for that. Next thing, we are having a referendum information open house. This will be in open house format, so no formal presentation, but the public is invited. It's going to be at the Fish Catchery, and that's going to be on Wednesday, October 14. City officials will be present from 5:30 PM until 8:00 PM. So for the public, if you have questions about the referendum, if you want more information, please stop out and there'll be various city officials there to answer any questions. Item number three, our budget workshop. We've scheduled the budget workshop for Thursday, October 22. That's at 6 o'clock PM. And that's in the public safety building training room so we can do kind of a in-the-round, more discussion-type process, a little bit more informal. So look forward to that. And then lastly, in your packets, you see the latest edition of the city engineer's project update for the Nagawicca Road path project. The project is proceeding, the contractor's laying storm sewer. They started at the intersection of Oakwood and Nagawicca, and they're working to the north. They've got, there are several properties to the north is the progress they've made so far. Biggest issue so far has been traffic control. The timing of the state's closure of the bridge on 83 is very unfortunate. It really limits people's abilities to get around the project when we're trying to keep Nagawicca Road closed to through traffic. But the city engineer is doing what he can to, to make that work for the contractor and the residents in the area. I did drive-through today just to see what it's like. And when, when I got there, I had to hold at the construction zone for probably about three or four minutes before I was allowed to pass because the construction activities are at times taking up the full width of the road. And so you got to kind of wait for the construction equipment to kind of provide a gap or an opportunity for vehicles to go in each direction. So otherwise, the, the project is going as planned. And that's the extent of my report tonight.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Okay, clerk support? Nothing, okay. Treasurer? Okay, item one, August 2020 treasurer's report. Who's giving the treasurer's report?
So the treasurer's report has always been just a written document in the packet. There's never been any kind of verbal report or anything associated with it. It's just a written report for the council's use. And as was brought to the attention of the council last time, this is the first treasurer's report since March. Amy Bookman, our finance officer, has been working diligently to get up to speed after we fell behind by a few months on the report. And she's finally got everything reconciled and up to date.
Great, thank you. Last but not least, council requests for future agenda items. Any council requests for future agenda items? Hearing none, we will move on to item 11, adjournment. Seeing no further business, we are adjourned at 7:51 PM, nine minutes to get to the Packer game.